This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the right of God, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Clem Wazleski.
Yeah.
Mike Richmond.
Yeah.
Jim Gallantino.
Yeah.
Margaret Gubernalty.
Yeah.
Mike Cristaldi.
Yeah.
Craig Pomisano.
Yeah.
David Carter.
Yeah.
Despina Hess.
Yeah.
Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Is coming.
Here.
Joe DiGirolamo.
Here.
Rich Patterson.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Hall. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Excuse me. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. Like to hear a motion to approve the minutes, May 26, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for the approval of resolutions and decisions, 27, 2016, Joanne Amadeo; 28, 2016, 8106 Ventnor; 29, 2016, Stephen and Ashley Gantz. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have...
Get people out?
Yeah, I'm saying that right now. The case number seven, Adam Weiss, 11 South Iroquois, we've just received notice that it has been withdrawn and will be rescheduled for a future meeting. If anyone's here for the 11 South Iroquois, that has been withdrawn. The first case is Nicholas S. Savapolos, 118 North Jefferson Avenue, Block 329, Lot 414, in the MF District, to grant an extension of C variance relief for side yard setback of three feet on one side, 4.3 inches on the other. Combined side yard setback of seven feet three inches, rear yard setback of 13 feet, lot width of 25 feet, and lot area of 3,125 square feet, and D variance for density for two units.
Yes, I do. This is a simple request to extend his permit for another 12 months. Prior to the Permanent Extension Act being renewed, this is prudent of the applicant to do this, so it's just a vote of yes or no to extend him 12 months.
Do I have to ask for a public comment?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Can we do it by voice? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next case is Revolution Builders, 202 North Rumsen Avenue, Block 419, Lot 21, in the S-25 District, to grant a C variance, side yard setbacks, combined setback, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLornan.
Thank you, Board Chairman. My report is dated June 22, 2016. It's a basic, simple application. Lot width is 36 feet where 40 feet is required, so it's an existing nonconforming. And two other variances being salt minimum side yard setback, five feet a minimum where 3.83 is being proposed, and a combined side yard setback of 13.32 feet where 13.67 feet is required, so there are two variances. I suggest that we hear testimony from the applicant as to why these variances should be granted.
The records show that Rumsenoli is recusing herself.
Actually, I would like to make a quick comment from my report, is the reason I have a question about this is if the side yard variance is granted of less than five feet, if the house next door is to be developed, they have to meet the 10-foot separation from this property, so it'll put a hardship on the adjoining property. That's why there is an issue.
Is Mr. Ballinson representing the applicant? Okay, you're just... Okay. I would just suggest we just...
He does the next case, too.
That's why we recess until he gets here, he's on every case.
Okay.
So let's find out where he is and I'll... We just make a motion.
All right, we're gonna recess for a few minutes until Mr. Ballinson shows up. Meeting is recalled to order.
Which matters on the agenda next, Mr. Patterson?
Revolution Builders is now...
Revolution, the first matter, the Seagrave matter, do you want to address that matter?
We haven't talked about Seagrave, that's the last one on the agenda.
There are people here for that. I'm Chris Ballinson, I represent Seagrave, with the board's permission, carried until next month. In light of Mr. McLornan's review memorandum mentioning the MF zoning and a potential rezone to the MF zone standards, I think we have to look at that and consider whether the plan... Consider whether or not the plan should be modified or revised or left as is, in light of the fact that there is talk, as I see, of a change to the MF zone standards.
Excuse me, one moment. Attorney's recusing himself, Leo Manos is sitting in, just while you're talking about this case. Welcome, Leo. So, item 10 on the agenda, Seagrave Properties, 1620 South Douglas, is being withdrawn from tonight's meeting?
It's being carried till next month, it's not being withdrawn, it's being carried till next month.
I mean, from tonight's meeting?
Yes.
So if anyone's here for Seagrave Properties, that will not be your card today.
Rich?
Yes?
Get on record that the new attorney's sitting down?
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear you say it.
Elias Manos, new attorney sitting in.
So we're back to Revolution Builders.
Correct. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Chris Ballinson, I represent Revolution Builders with respect to their application before the board this evening for 202... 202 North Rumsen Avenue. It's identified on tax map as Lot 21 in Block 419, it's in the S-25 zoning district.
Mr. Ballinson, sorry to interrupt, just before we move on to the next one, just to make it clear, if anyone's here for that, we want to let everyone know there's not going to be any further notices, so that if they are here for the Seagrave, that it will be scheduled for next month. They won't be getting another notice.
That's right. To the extent the plan changes, however, I probably defer on the side of noticing if the plan changes and the relief changes. If the plan does not change, that would be accurate. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
The Revolution Builders application at 202 North Rumsen is an existing single-family home lot. The existing home on the property will be removed in favor of a new two-story home to meet all the current flood ordinance standards, and in fact, all the zoning standards except for one variance that's being requested with respect to the right side yard setback, which is going to be consistent with the existing setback of one foot... It's a one foot two inch deviation where a three foot 10 inch setback where five is otherwise required. We believe, and we've read Mr. McLornan's report, but we believe that that variance, in fact, can be justified. The alternative to asking for that setback is to build a house that conforms with five foot on the right and eight foot on the left. The setbacks stay just about the same. The combined side yard, regardless if the house conforms or not, is 13.32. With the plan as presented today, we will make it meet the 13.32 because we're a couple inches off, and that will meet that. Regardless, if a conforming application came in, other words, if that setback was slid over, had to slid over to meet five on the right, it's still 13.32. It would be 8.32 on the left, five feet on the right. What would happen, though, you lose your driveway, and you force the house up. And the house can go up on pilings, and you'd have then about 15 stairs to your front door. What I think, what that creates then is a home that now meets the Sandy standards, and you have your parking underneath and a conforming height of 28 feet above your first floor, but we have really yet to see that style develop in the parkway area. And on a house at the 200 block of Rumsen Avenue, 200... Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please.
I built on the same size line, with a split level, with the garage underneath, no variances.
Underneath?
Underneath, on the one side.
That's what I...
Bedroom ends up on top of it, three others, you end up with a four-bedroom house, no variances.
I understand that. And what I'm saying is, we can do that, it just forces the house up, it forces the parking underneath.
I think the board might even go for the height there, but it's not going to be that much different. When you put the garage on the one side, put a room on top of it, has a split.
Well, that assumes the homeowner wants a split level. I mean, and Mike, I appreciate that.
There's no variances, Chris.
I understand that. I understand that. What I'm saying is, you can build on this lot with no variances. It can be done. One way or another, the parking is going to go underneath, and the height of the first floor is going to increase, unless you have a split level, of course, and you drop it.
Chris?
Yes.
It's not 28 feet over the first floor, it's 28 feet over 11. So if you go up higher than that 11 feet, then you've got to bring your roof down.
I understand that.
Okay, well, you said 28 over the first floor, so...
If I said, without a height variance, is probably a better way to put that. Without a height variance. And it's a style of home that has not yet, except for a split level, that has not yet, we've seen yet the parkway section. The reason for this application is to try to avoid that at all costs at this point. And I've noticed Roger's comment about speculating into the future as to whether or not that creates a hardship for the homeowner next door, who's lived with this condition now however long, because if he ever decides to rebuild in the future, then he might not be able to meet the 10-foot between houses. Well, he can, he could do what everybody else does, he can massage your setbacks to have the driveway on that side and meet it, like everybody else does. I don't know that that's an appropriate... It's an appropriate comment to say, I mean, anything could happen in the future, zoning could change in the future, anything could happen, to suggest that this variance may in the future affect the neighbor. I don't think it's something that the board shouldn't...
John, didn't you just do the one on 200 block? The 200 block of Quincy Avenue, didn't you just draw that one?
Let me have John's for it. Mr. Obolinas? On your license, special architect?
Yes, I am.
And you've drawn the plan, obviously, for this house and for 202 North Rumsen?
Yes.
Would you be kind enough then to take the board through the plan?
I can confirm.
Speak to the variance, and speak to what I was referring to as an alternative, which is a conforming plan and the style of that. John?
The one that shows our attempt at a version that works with the parking underneath. And I understand Mike's suggestion. The problem, and I've studied that, and the problem is that because we have a limited height at the 28 feet above the 11, if you're going to put the garage in, we lose the third floor. Third floor doesn't work. Try to fit four bedrooms, a living room, kitchen dining, in like one and a half floors. It really won't work. It can work in a 30-foot zone, on that 20, so I did study that. The other issue is that when you put the garage below, you create a huge wall on the one side. You create a nine, 10-foot solid wall on one side, whether it's piles or not, against the neighbor that's way down closer to the ground. So that was one of the big detriments, I thought. We do meet the height requirement of 28 feet above 11, like you said, but we squash the roof down to basically the Margate 5 and 12 pitch. So you have the high walls on two sides, we have basically two floors, no attic space because of the limited space above that, not even for storage, Christmas boxes, whatever it is. So that's gone, you can see how shallow it is. So the idea is that with the garage below, and the fact that we have to go up 15 steps just to get to the first floor. A lot of things that ruled against us pursuing this option because of those reasons. It doesn't match any building along that street in the neighborhood, you know, they're all cottages, you know, there's nothing that that's high... It's going to be 20 feet, it's not going to be higher than anything else, but it's those walls that were created, and you decide that, I believe, it creates a canyon effect for the other buildings.
Let's talk about that house that's... Some of the bulk criteria associated with that. John, if we take the board who designed the house, existing conditions on the property, design now what setbacks are, and then where the variance is located.
I'll start with the side plan. Basically, the side plan, we have the building setback from the front property line, a good dimension. We're at 17 feet two inches.
John, that's the front yard setback, that's actually only requiring about 15. It's actually further back.
It's further back because they requested the owner to have a decent porch at the front, so the porch meets the porch setback, but the building, because of the desire for a larger porch, the main mass of the building is pushed even further back than the required setback on that street.
I think the porch is back... What changed further back then?
Correct.
Setback's in front of the area, you need that.
Yes, it is. And anyway, so that's the front setback we resolved. The rear setback, again, it's not built up to the property line, we have some dimensions set further in, so as it goes to the 16 feet, we're at eight, I believe it's like 18 feet for the rear yard setback. So we have a good setback at the rear, we don't come up to the line. The driveway side, we're at nine foot two inch, requirement for a driveway is nine feet. Again, nine feet, if you tried to park a car nine feet and open the doors, it's still... It works by zoning code, but it's still a tight space, because you're opening the door against the building, but we did provide that parking lane. And that parking lane has parking for three cars, a requirement being two, we have three cars in that one side, in this scheme.
Two are required?
Two are required, so we're providing three, and the other side is that we have the three foot 10 inch side on the variance side, because of the fact that we're trying to maintain at least a decent parking lane.
And how far is the house after the 3.8 feet?
I don't have it mentioned that, but I drove around, it's closer than the 10 feet with this thing, but again, if this discussion about future work, I looked at the house, were they to go and design a new house, there's some flexibility as to how you arrange that house with the setback. So if I were the architect for that, and I've become expert in 35-foot wide lots, then I believe that that person can still come up with a design that meets the, now the 10-foot distance from the house to our house, but also have a decent layout for the first floor. So I didn't think that was a very serious issue, at least from what I saw driving by.
John, you had talked about some of the other bulk criteria, and then how the design that you come up with really fits within that, is smaller than our house that could be constructed on.
Well, first of all, it's a two-story home. It's, we're doing two stories, living area's on the first floor. We come up, we meet the flood elevation, is where the first floor begins, and then 29 feet, actually 27 feet in this version here, to the top of the roof. Because the owner elected not to do a third floor, it allowed us some flexibility with the heights interior-wise, so we didn't have to build a full 28 feet. We're at 27 feet, we have a nine-foot first floor, an eight-foot second floor, and then this attic space is adequate enough for attic storage. They can have a pull-down stair, have enough crawl space up in the top floor to have something that's usable, but not living space. So in this scheme, we have the two full floors, we are below the maximum height.
Existing structure.
By a foot, correct.
And John, where is this first floor on this house? Flood, flood, flood set, is that right?
It's at the flood height, yes.
Where is the first floor off of grade?
Off of grade, it's at...
This house versus the house reported is completely empty.
Yeah, this house, off of grade, it's four feet nine inches, as opposed to about 11 feet or so for the one with the garage below. I mean, it's a big difference, and I'm sure that requires, I don't know if you still have the BFE committee, but we're going four feet seven inches higher than the BFE for the garage below, which creates a different issue, I believe. We're not, you know, we're going higher than your allowable, I believe, three feet, so that creates another situation if we had put the garage below that.
So you're talking about a difference off grade, it's about six or seven feet?
Yes.
Two lines?
Correct.
And you're talking about 10 steps difference?
Difference, yes, 10 steps, 10, 11 steps difference from one to the other.
Your landscaping, landscaping of this particular lot, how do you assess that? Do you require...
All the landscaping meets because of the generous front yard that we have, our setback is further for the building, which allowed us to create more landscaping. We have the parking to the side, the strip, concrete strips for the parking spots, so we're actually, we're giving more landscaping back than was required.
Yeah, you're constrained, obviously, with the footprint, you've got your 20% yard, 16 feet yard, right?
Yes.
You've got a required 15 feet in front yard, correct?
Yes.
The extra width of the house, does that really give you a larger house than, say, it's a lot of 40 feet wide, and you didn't have setbacks and such as that?
Well, it gives us a house that's consistent with the neighborhood, with the size of the rooms internally, that even though it's a narrow lot, believe it or not, the variance we're asking for, which is a foot and some change, matters in a space where you have a smaller home, that we try to create living spaces, again, it's a narrow lot, so you're going to create, you're forced to squeeze the house in and bring it toward the back, that living areas, you don't want, nobody wants a 14-foot living room, nobody wants a 13, 14, 14 and a half, so that allows us to add the extra dimension to the living areas. You know, by the time you subtract the stairway, the wall widths and stuff, you're not left with a lot of space in a lot that's 35 feet wide, so we really are asking for that foot and change, it really matters in this case, again, because of the width of the lot.
And you could still build that same house, including on pilings, parking underneath, you just have the same side yard, you just have to slide over, and you essentially build the same sized rooms?
Yes, exactly.
How big is the house, project?
It's 2,000, it's about 2,200 square feet.
I didn't hear that.
About 2,200 square feet. And that's four bedrooms, basically living, kitchen, dining, mudroom, master bedroom.
The desire for this house really was consistency with the neighborhood, did that hurt that?
Absolutely. It's, you look at the house, again, it fits in a neighborhood, the gable roofs, even though we're building higher than some of the buildings, it looks like it fits in that area, as opposed to the alternative I came up with, which does not fit. I had to do that exercise for myself, to see what the difference is, and it's a big difference.
The one comment really against the proposal for one foot two inches, and that's the one that you could...
Yes, correct.
You can tweak the plan to make, I got that point, please do.
Yes.
The one statement that's remain with respect to, if the lot is short, we also have in the future, then we're going to have to adjust with this property, I think, definitely. Do you think that situation outweighs building of this house in store consistently with the pattern of the parkway, or not?
No, I don't think so. I think that presumed neighbor, or new construction or new design that might come in the future, is that it's not, there's a lot of flexibility in that. I believe that that person, if he were to design a new house, that even though our house is a little closer in that one side yard, that I believe that with clever design, that he can come up with something that conforms without having to go through the variance process on his end of it.
And John, one of the... The house now is whole property, I think three foot side yard setback, but that guy's got to design around that, come out anyway.
Well, exactly. The existing conditions are such that he's already forced to do something.
In fact, the existing condition of three feet gives him less latitude than what we're proposing as three foot 10 inch.
Right. And even if we leave it at five feet, I believe, he still has an issue at five feet, so again, there's enough, I think the important word is, there's enough flexibility that he can do something that works. He's not locked into having to go for a variance, unless he wants to, unless he decides that, you know, he wants something bigger, or whatever, there's the possibility that he can come up with a design on his end that gives him what he likes. Again, I can't, I don't know who the client is, you know, but that he can come up with something that works without being forced into something that requires a variance.
Back down, if all people have to put...
You can put a driveway, correct.
Driveway on that side, Jason, to our front.
In fact, you're going to have to have about a seven foot.
We could put a driveway there.
Correct. Yes. Correct. I think that, again, with a number of things, which is, we're meeting the flood elevation, which is four feet change above, it doesn't raise it significantly above the neighborhood, which helps make it match the homes along that street in there. So we're not raising it above the flood elevation, the height is less than the required height at 27 feet, so we're really trying as hard as we can to keep this conforming as much as we can with the whole street up and down Rumsen.
Can I throw one more thing in there?
If you...
I want to throw one more thing in.
Yeah, yeah.
If you do the house with the split level, steps stay the same, so forget that extra steps going on. You get the extra bedroom over top of the garage. If you drop from an eight pitch, so you can't use that as livable space up there, to a six pitch, you pick up 20 inches. So you're already a foot under for height.
You're saying that there's a...
I'm saying you're a...
Just get a third design that works.
You got it.
Would the height of 30 feet be beneficial to you? Would the height of 30 feet be beneficial to you instead of the 28? Would that...
Are you kidding? Of course. 30 feet, we love to have a 30-foot. Is that going to work? You know, 30 feet above...
I'm telling you.
...elevation of the building, right?
Possibly.
Did you next to move the...
No, no, it's still, because of the narrowest of the lot, remember, you're going to go up with the width of the building, as you do your 5 and 12 pitch, it still won't give us that room upstairs in the third floor. If we had a 40-foot wide lot, yes. This is a 35-foot wide lot. So we're really constrained with the width.
36.
36 on 36. So yeah, 40 feet could work at 30 feet height, but in this case, no.
Just yes, and a jump, the size of the bedrooms, the bedrooms upstairs. How big?
Local-sized bedrooms. I mean, the master bedroom...
Questions, how about kids' bedrooms? Kids' bedrooms. That's great.
The bedrooms are 11 feet by 11 foot 4 inches, which is middle grade, you know, they're not 12, 14 feet, but they're good size for kids' bedrooms. The master is 14 feet by 13 and a half, and we have a guest down below that's 11 feet by 10 and a half feet. So they're all mid-level size bedrooms. They're not small, not large, right along the average size for a good bedroom in this area.
For the record, John, is this two floors or is it two and a half stories?
It's two floors. There's not even 5 feet on that third floor. We have the 5-foot diagram, well, there's no diagram because we don't have 5 feet to measure on the third floor.
Okay. Because all you're drawing is third floor plans on...
Yeah, that's a typo. It's a pure two-story structure.
Scott, do you own the property?
Yes.
The house, your house...
John, would you give him the microphone, please?
Your house that's been designed, that we've been talking about?
Yes.
And the issue really comes down to design. The issue comes down to one of split level, to one of placing the house with the two restrooms underneath, the parking underneath, or trying to keep with generally what's there now and not too high off the grade.
Right.
When you talked to John and your builder, where have you asked them to go in one direction?
Well, the original design was this design, and we felt there would be no problem getting the variance. Then we got Roger's letter. Obviously, we had to figure out a different design, so we figured out this other thing with the garage underneath, but it makes a garage door with an ugly wall next to it and a million steps going up. So it's not as desirable to somebody coming to buy a house that they have to walk with their groceries on 15 steps or 16 steps. It's just, you know, and you could just be at a regular level, you know, which is 8 steps, which is normal. Everybody's going to have 8 steps eventually. And...
Is the design really drive through the rest of the variance?
Yeah, design.
Thank you very much.
Well, I think in regard to what you're saying, I think what Mr. Cristaldi was suggesting was having a garage under the house and still having 8 steps.
Have a split level.
How big would the rooms be in a split level, though? I mean, are you going to have two little teeny rooms?
You're going to go 23 feet wide instead of 22, and you're only narrow at the garage. And on the side wall with the garage, as you put two windows in, bring the siding down.
But you're still, I think, you have to remember, you're still walking up the 15 steps.
No, no, you're not. You're only walking up the same. You're still going.
You're going to go up to one level, but that's not going to be a living one. You still have to walk up more steps if you're going to go to the garage.
You go up the 8 steps to the first floor. And you go behind the garage, you go up 6 steps, you go to the top of the garage for bedroom. You turn the other way, you go into another bedroom, and you go up the steps. You're drawing the house.
You're not running the steps, you're still going to have...
You're still going to have, you're still going to have 13 steps between, hold on, and you're not going to 10 foot, so you're going to end up with 13 treads, no matter how you build it.
I'm sorry. Mike, I appreciate that.
Pardon?
I appreciate that. I haven't seen that plan.
I'm done.
I don't know what it looks like.
I'm done.
And whether or not a homeowner, any particular homeowner wants that split design that you're referencing, and I, there's a million ways to do anything, and I appreciate the fact that there may be another way to do it. We were looking at it this way.
Thank you. Clem, did you have a question? Put your mic on, please. Microphone, please.
If I'm correct, the only issue is 14 inches deficiency in one side yard setback.
That's correct.
John, there's no way you can massage that plan and squeeze 14 inches out of it.
You know what? You ask me a question, I think every time I've been to the board, and I appreciate it. It's a good question. Again, we're not talking large spaces on the inside. We're already at a basic size for, and again, I always talk to the living room first. You want that living room wow factor. If you're in Margate, you know, again, you want a home of value and quality. You want that living room to be 16, 17, 18 feet. In this case, we're at 15 and a half feet. You take away the foot and a half or foot, you're down to about 14 feet, 14 feet and change for a living room. And part of that 14 and a half feet, you have an entryway where you're going to come in. It affects your furniture arrangement. It's not a great, it's not a great area to work with. If we're down, if we're limiting that dimension, I really strongly believe that this is, you want this living area to be a decent size, not overly large, but by taking the foot change away from that, then it becomes a small space, and it's not consistent, I believe it's not consistent with our open plan living at the shore, you know? And they have, this is for family use. You want that space to flow, and the fact that the entryway somewhere, you have to enter the space, that takes away technically another 3 feet from that. So that's your travel distance. So that 14-foot or 16-foot living room is now really 12, 11 feet, if you consider that as a pathway. So we're trying to keep some dimension, and that helps us. The 14 inches really helps us in this narrow lot of 36 feet.
John, what's your foot yard setback to the building?
17.
And what are you proposing?
We're at 17 feet 2 inches that we're proposing for the building.
Right. So you have, you can use two more feet there for something? They wanted a deck. He said they wanted a big bed.
Requirement's 15 feet 2 inches for building, and we're setting it back at 17. So we're actually, again, for my client's desire for a larger front porch.
I think it's width, the width, I don't think narrowness is quite safe with the block.
Yeah. We can make the house longer, but again, it doesn't help the fact that, you know, again, from all the homes I've designed here, we really want that width. We want something that you can physically put furniture inside without bumping into things as you walk in. We need those dimensions, and again, in a lot of the size, that really matters for a house in this location.
And obviously, the neighborhood to the right notified the application.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment? House portion is closed.
Just to raise one point, it's in Roger's report, but as to the conditions that we would be interested in, bringing back in the grass strip, any objection to that? As, any objection to any of the requirements from Roger, fixing the...
Yeah, I asked for a discussion. Bestment discussed. Any other discussion? You want to read it?
Okay, this is an application for C variances. There's an existing non-conformity with the lot width. The required is 40 feet, but the existing's 36 feet, and the proposed, obviously, continues to be 36 feet. From a reading of the report, I think that the only variance that's required is a right side yard variance requirement, 5 feet. Proposal is 3.83 feet.
We will eliminate combined side yard variance.
I was going to say the combined, it looks like it's, it was indicated in the report that it was needed, but you're going to eliminate that 13.32 feet or more. Okay. So that's all, that's the only variance they're requesting at this point in time. So I would need a motion as to approval, any affirmative, I'm sorry, for granting of the C variance for side yard, right side yard setback. Let's pull that. All right, we're going to delay that motion.
Motion hasn't been made.
No.
Tom Collins?
Did a lot of talking over a small little piece of land here. In terms of the Margate zoning, we are here to determine if there is a hardship for this case. The only hardship that has been presented tonight is that we have someone with an undersized lot that's trying to put in an oversized house. There's no need for it. We're in the process through the new master plan right now of redesigning standards so we don't have to face this.
What, you mean on undersized lots?
On undersized lots?
Yes.
And there's no need to, I don't see any positives to the neighborhood. We keep saying cottages, but we have a little rancher, and we have all these ranchers in Margate with 3-foot setbacks because they were all ranchers 40 years ago. Now people want to come in and get second floor, third floor, 4 and 5 bedrooms, and they still want the 3-foot. We just can't do it. So I don't see any positives in this. The negatives are overwhelming, and it's just too big of a house for two small lots. I vote no.
I think by granting this variance, we in effect, we'd be putting a restriction on the adjacent property. We'd be giving relief to one property and putting a burden on another one. I don't think we can do that. I'd vote against it.
Jim Gallantino?
It's a tight lot. I would have appreciated had he thought of Mike's idea with the split level. I agree with the board so far. I think it's a no.
Mike Cristaldi?
Voting on a lot that you can put a house on without any variances and putting a burden on the next house, I think's really wrong, and I think it'd be wrong for the board to go that direction. I have to vote no when I know there's an alternative for it. So I vote no.
Okay, so just to be clear, the only variance they're asking for is 1 foot 2 inches?
Yes.
That's correct.
1 foot 2 feet.
And everything else conforms?
Yes. That's 1.2 feet, Mike.
Right, I'm sorry. I think if everything else conforms, and I don't know if 14 inches is going to be a detriment to the neighborhood, so I'm going to vote for it.
Turn your microphone over, please.
Microphone.
The site review and how tight that is next door, and I really have to agree with some of the others on the board that I have to vote no because it's just too tight on that one side.
Rich Patterson?
Well, I don't feel the board should attempt to mitigate the impact of the variance where the non-conformity has a specific detrimental impact on the neighbor. This is something that's being addressed in the new master plan where the undersized lots are going to have not be subject to the same rules as conforming lots, and I also have to vote no.
The application does not pass. The vote is 6 to 1.
The phone over here, please, and thank you for telling the information. I'm going to draw that.
Thank you. Pardon me?
Before you came, we already carried, Dad noticed it.
That I received. I didn't get a letter. Okay.
Right.
Okay. For next month.
Good chat.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other business? Jim, would you like to make a motion to the meeting, be adjourned? No? Dave?
How's that sound?